There she is.
Okay.
All right, welcome to the January 23rd, 2020 Village Board meeting. Actually, before we get started, I just want Carl to stand up for a minute. I have to show one of the pamphlets. That is impressive. So, ahead of time, can you point it out? So Heather, can you help us lead us in the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. We will open up the public comment section of the meeting. If you'd like to come up to the podium, please state your name and your address, and try to limit it to five minutes if you can. So anyone who'd like to come up, feel free.
So my name is Lexi Popovich. Address 42, or sorry, 1595 Awad Avenue, Brighton. I'm here from the American Lung Association. I'm the community engagement manager over there, and we are frequently working in the community with different organizations and municipalities to talk about and educate about certain tobacco control policies that we can kind of work on as a whole in Monroe County. So you'll see with the packets in front of you, we have worked with our policy center at the state level, and we are working with several other communities with doing, it's called retailer density, and it's licensing and zoning policies. Basically, we go around and work with, you know, we work with countywide legislators as well. We helped bring T-21 to the county last year. Ultimately, they waited for the state, which is now T-21 across New York State. So right now, we're working with several, again, other municipalities on these types of policies. The town of Perryton actually created a zoning policy last year that zoned all tobacco and vape retailers to adult-use only zones, and those typically would be away from schools, churches, and youth-centered locations. That's kind of the goal in New York State with some of the partners we're working on because of the marketing, the flavors, all the e-cigarettes, and everything that's going on with that lately. I think this is the recent time that we're working with a lot of municipalities, so we're just here to kind of educate and see if you guys have any questions about what we're doing. As well, the town of Brighton does have a zoning policy that also zones their vape retailers to adult-use only entertainment areas. Again, it's away from schools, youth-centered locations. With certain other policies we've included in there, there's a locker on the state that our partners work on, one that the state recommends is the city of Newburgh, and they can cap the number of, you know, retailers in a certain area. The maps that you see there, we've done for the village of Webster. So there are three tobacco slash vape retailers in the village. So towns and villages can create their own policies and cap that number, so you know there's no new vape shops coming in and things of that nature. So those are what the maps are for. Another village locally in the county is also working on this, and they're working to draft policies to keep, you know, some of the vape retailers out of their villages as well. So that's just kind of a quick rundown. I don't know if I would open this up if you guys had any questions, but you know, our goal is to kind of work with all the policies that Governor Cuomo just announced recently, tobacco control, T-21, the pharmacy ban, the flavors. This is just one extra step that local municipalities can do to ensure, you know, keeping kids out, keeping the new products out of the hands of kids, and keeping the addiction from, you know, exceeding how it is. We work with the WEN Coalition, and we see what it does in the schools, the middle schools, and epidemic is, you know, only increasing. It increases with, you know, adolescents vaping marijuana as well, which is going to highlight of the illness and deaths nationwide and around the state. So that's just something we'd like to educate about. So I don't know if you wanted to open up for questions, or I do have information in there, my email address if anyone's interested in speaking further.
Thank you, so many questions.
I do have one question.
Sure.
Do you do any education in the schools?
We do. My coworker, actually, he runs Reality Check, that's what it's called, which is not a group in Webster, but there's Pittsburgh Mendon, Pittsburgh Sutter, and Eastridge. So he works primarily with these groups. I do presentations for parents and youth as well, mostly high school, middle school.
Sure.
So yeah, that's something we do all around the county. We also have Livingston County as well, so that's something we're actively doing. We work with health groups as well as we do that.
So we've done anything with the Webster School District there?
Yeah, we work with WEN Coalition, and we bring kids in. I've done several presentations with teachers in Webster, community members and parents and some youth as well.
Great. Very good.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I need to bring pens.
Next person has to bring chocolate.
I just thought I'd take a moment and introduce myself. My name is Janine Sanger, and I'm the president of the Webster Health and Education Network, Drug-Free Community Coalition, of which Lexi is a member. We have representation from all sectors of our community. We have 40 members, 25 very active. We just recently were awarded a SAMSA grant to address exactly what Lexi was talking about, scathing off the first use of our youth, because the earlier or the later kids will start to use drugs or alcohol, the less likely it is that they will become addicted. So that really is our mission, and we're focusing on two substances, which is required in the grant, and that's nicotine, which directly is impacted by the information that you receive tonight and Lexi's information in alcohol. Our grant is $125,000 a year for five years. We're very, very excited about it and know that the possibilities are limitless for us. So there is a website on that pad. If you're interested in joining one of our meetings, if you're even just to see what we're about, you're more than welcome, and our meetings are on our website.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Dear Mayor Barts, not here tonight, I'm not pleased. I hope that he's feeling better, I hope he's feeling well, I hope he's overcoming his adversities. And village board members, good evening. My name is William Ruoff, former board member and mayor of the village of Webster. I appear before you tonight in a vastly new and much different capacity than any other, which heretofore has been my privilege to do so. This evening, I appear before you having been selected as a courier, a messenger of sorts, to deliver to you greetings from a city in the nation of Ukraine named Bohoradchiny. I carry with me tonight a letter with a town seal from this city, which proposes the concept of a sister city program, sister cities village program, between the village of Webster and the city of Bohoradchiny. Before we entertain any thoughts on this proposal, may I interject here with a bit of personal history. My dear mother, Yodaka Aida Loklich Ruoff, was born in the province of Galicia, not very far from the vote, the administration capital of Galicia and its suburban town of Bohoradchiny. Therefore, I feel an honored sense of closeness to my Ukrainian heritage as I speak about such places, when I speak about their history and their present place on the world stage. With all the hullabaloo about Ukraine in the news lately, one may envision a nation torn by strife, pit-packet politicians, a huge influence from nations outside its borders, and general mishandling of governmental affairs within the nation itself, some of which may have a certain element of truth. But wait, how many nations can you name that are in the same boat? Doesn't take much to look around and see what's going on as far as that's concerned. Throughout its history, Ukraine has had vast armies crossing its fertile farmland, its cities have been laid to waste, its borders have been erased and redrawn, its people enslaved by communists and Nazis, and at times when all seemed lost and hopeless, the Ukrainian spirit arose and flourished. Today, it has its own nationhood, its own central government, its own identity. We should all be proud to welcome their elected government with its Western-leaning views and attitudes in joining with the United States to foster a more stable world. In the greater Rochester area, especially in the town of Arundicote and the town and village of Webster, we have large number of Ukrainians and Ukrainian-Americans who love the United States of America. They have deep roots here. They have joined our armed forces, fought for our country, died for our country, on the battlefields, on the high seas, and in the air. They have brought their skills, such as Tu and Di companies, Witness Chyid Toul and Salro, it's a Ukrainian-held company, and banking, the Ukrainian credit union, and Hope Road. This list goes on and on and on. May I suggest, if I may be so bold, as a single carrier of this message to you, that the board establish a commission or a committee of some type to study this invitation by the city of Bohoradchiny to enter into a sister cities program. Regard the merits of such a study and the many useful outcomes that can be derived from such a cooperative effort, as has been and continues to be the example set forth in the town of Arundicote with its sister city in Ukraine, by the way, which has been going on for over 20 years. I thank you for your time. May we all reach out for mutual understanding and compassion. And now, if you have any questions, I would entertain a few minutes to answer them. And by the way, I have the original document from the proposed sister city here with its seal, which I have given you a copy of because I want to take it back to the man enunciated in the second paragraph of this document, Mr. Michael Bachuk, who is, has his own church in Penfield, and is very instrumental in trying to formulate this program to get it off the ground. I think anybody's first question would be, why Webster? Why the village of Webster? Mainly because so many Ukrainians live here, and they can see a nice, clear-cut example of cooperation with a village such as ours. We also have Phillips Village within the midst of the village boundaries, which has a great number of Ukrainian-Americans or Ukrainians who have just come to this country, and I think that they would be pleased to know that the village that they live in here in the United States represents a taste of home, sometimes vice versa. I thank you for your time. Good evening.
Thank you, thank you very much. And is there, I heard that there is a large anniversary celebration that just recently happened, is that true?
Pardon?
A large anniversary celebration?
For?
Have you had one recently?
For Ukraine?
No, for yourself personally.
Oh, myself, yeah, I sort of have an anniversary, yes. When you're married to someone for 60 years, it sort of stands out a little bit.
So congratulations. Anyone else have anything this evening? Please step up to the podium.
Bill, thanks.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate your effort, and we'll certainly look into this and hope that there's a positive outcome.
Thank you very much. I'm available at any time.
All right, so if no one else has anything this evening, I will also close the portion of the public comments and move on to board business. And we enter into approved minutes for the village board meeting of January 9th. Any questions from those minutes?
Nope, we're good.
All right, then I'll ask for a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes from January 9th.
I'll make that one.
On second.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Belkine?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
So moving on to approving claims and warrants, I believe Al and Carl. Please, the bills, did you have any things to ask any department heads? Would you like to reach in for something?
Anyone's okay with it?
I would just wanted to ask what Syntec does for cleaning for our offices.
They do the runners, some of the rags, the cloth rags here with shop, and then the uniforms. And the uniforms-
Oh, okay.
Are paid, but then they're taken out of a clothing allowance. It's kind of reimbursed by the-
Okay, but there's no cleaning, like, of the offices or anything like that?
No, there's supplies to, you know, sometimes the clothes and things like that.
Little does that, right?
Cleaning?
Yeah.
Yes, most of them.
That's what I thought.
Really gonna make a mess.
All right, what happened on this agenda? It's like microscopic. No, this is the budget modification that I have to read, and I can't see it.
You can pull it up on your iPad.
It's good. All right, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to make some budget modifications from planning-
Did you take a motion with claims and warrants?
Claims and warrants first.
I wanted to see if you were paying attention. If you are, so thank you. Yes, I need a motion to approve the claims and warrants.
I'll make a motion.
Trustee Belkine?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
All right, so we have some general budget modifications from planning contracts, $2,022.50 to zoning. We also have contingency of $1,99400 into computer assistance and hardware. $608900 again, contingency $6,722 to treasurer and sewer fund. We have one in the sewer funds.
That is tiny, I'm sorry.
Oh, my goodness.
I'm sorry.
Special assessment on tax bill for $176,970 to property tax sewer charge, $176,970.
Sorry about that.
That was rough. I apologize. Anyone have any questions or concerns about that? So I'll ask for a motion to approve the budget modification and transfers.
I'll make it. One second.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Belkine?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
All right, so I think this is, Heather has something for us that she would like to discuss?
Okay, so we recently had someone come in for IT services, integrated systems, and I just wanted to put it before you, just as a discussion. I'm still looking into it a little bit more, but I just wanted to kind of let you know. Right now, we pay around $12,000 a year, well, and it's way over that for LMT, and this other group, Integrated Services, or I'm sorry, Systems, they, their wheelhouse is municipalities, so I think they understand our needs a little bit better, and LMT is a great company, there's nothing wrong with them, it's just I think it might be more than what we need. Our integrated services will start at $4,000 a year, and the difference in pricing would be, we pay for a block, so we get like 50 hours, and then if we run out, we can buy more at that same $85 per hour as on the vermi contract. LMT, it's, we get six hours a month, if we go over it, we're charged. So oftentimes, we are going over that six hours, and I kind of talked to Integrated Systems, and they said that a lot of the stuff they do, they just take from our 50 hours and they do right in-house, so there's no need for them to come out here. And I did talk to Bill at Pittsburgh, Dorfia has them, and she's very happy with them, and I actually just called the town of Victor, and I'm waiting to hear back from them, but so far, it's all good, and I just wanted to put that in front of you.
So is, do we have a current contract with the current office?
Um, no.
So we're confident in that? So 30-day out, 60-day out?
I'll find out specifically, but we're not in a contract.
That's the first thing, make sure of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was really impressed with them, and also, they, down the road, could save some more money by moving to the cloud as well, and they'll start managing as like any, any of our server updates or things, instead of paying for those again, we'll start moving toward the cloud, which can also save some money.
So for that, for Integrated Systems, do they put you in a contract, or is it, do you know any of that information as a long-term contract? Is it out with 20 days?
I think, my understanding was it was a year. And, but the other, the, the, all nice thing about them too is if, because we're not sure how many hours we're gonna need at this point, they said if we're in a contract, they're not gonna like charge us extra, if we're, you know, we got a month left and we need more, then they just kind of float us if we decided to go on to the next year. So my understanding is a year, but I'll find out for sure.
Good, good stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very good. Tell Megan thank you for the research. Is this you too?
Yeah.
So were you gonna bring more information to the next meeting? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, I wanted to wait back to your, Joe was concerned, you know, we do have, I think LMT really does provide good service to us. I just, in good conscience, I feel like $6,000 is the significant savings.
Absolutely, I would agree.
So I think maybe LMT is just, they're used to private sector and, you know, big companies, and they, you know, necessarily need as much as they have to offer.
Very good.
I'll let you know what the town of Victor says.
I think that we should have their esteemed lawyer read this stuff over, make sure. Acceptable.
I don't think he'd read this over. He'd probably review the contract.
Well, this is the contract. The only thing in here it says-
Doesn't say anything.
The only thing in here says, if they screw up and you, your data gets lost, your data gets corrupted, your data gets stolen by somebody, you can only get $250 bucks from them. The damages are limited to $250, which, I mean, that's a little unreasonable, but-
Well, one thing, I, we did talk about that, but actually, we're not sure what LMT does at all, because Joe can't find anything, that they give us anything, so we're a little concerned about that too, so we're looking into that, but-
Well, that's probably a good thing, then. They don't, they don't limit their damages. If LMT screws up, you can sue them for whatever your damages are.
I don't think, that's kind of not how I would think, but, but we did just increase-
Well, you said you-
See Carl's evidence when you open it to legal.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm pre, I'm just prefacing, look, I'm just prefacing on it that you said we don't have a current contract with LMT. So if you don't have a current contract with them, then they can't limit their damages. So I'm just going on what you told me, whereas this one, they want to limit the damages to $250. Carl asked the question, so I'm just responding to the trustee.
It makes a lot of sense.
So, you guys decide to do whatever you want to do.
I'm also add to that-
Thank you, Dan.
We recently increased our, our cyber policy last year.
Well, that's fine. I'm just saying, you know?
Well, still, we need to know, yeah.
Otherwise, it's basically just an hourly agreement. You're gonna pay them depending on A, B, C, or D, you know? The more hours you sign up for, the less their rate is, and, and, you know, so it's a pretty simple contract, except they limit their damages to $250.
I know, and I'm not asking for a resolution tonight, I just want to put it in front of-
Well, that's why I was asking you the question.
Make sure you look into it.
Yes.
Well, I didn't read where they back it up, twice a day, in two different places.
Yes, they have two different locations where they do that.
And I don't know a lot about this stuff, but it probably, you know, the more you can move to the cloud is probably a better idea. Because servers have a finite lifespan, and, and if you lose your data on a server, you're definitely got problems, but here, you know, if they can move everything off-site, then that's probably a good thing.
It depends, I mean, you're right about that too. A lot of people are worried about the cloud as well, because who knows what can happen to that.
Showers by the cloud.
Basically, that's like Microsoft runs those kinds of servers, so if Microsoft goes down the tubes, you know, this country is probably going down the tubes.
All right, looks at Heather's up again.
Not that I want to be. Next thing is Haile, Fryer, and Kuhn. They're a benefits broker, right now, we currently use bonds, and we are happy with them, however, I don't know if you recall, we recently added and paid for HR Works, which is $1,500 a year, and we also pay for them to do our sexual harassment training, but Haile, Fryer, and Kuhn includes that just with what we get from Exels. They, I have, it was 42 pages, so I didn't want to put it in the packet, but I do pack it if you want to look through it.
Well, as small as his apprentice, you probably could squeeze it in.
Well, I told you this was gonna be a bad night for me.
You need a bag of napkins?
So that one right there would save us $1,900, and the difference with them is that each of these benefits companies, Exels pays them, so we get to pick, and they get their money regard, they get their money either way, Exels pays them, we pick our broker. But they want to set themselves apart, so they offer a lot more services, and the HR Work system that we signed up for, Haile, Fryer, and Kuhn has one, and I've looked at a demo, and it just, it's just included, and I'm really impressed with it. They all, like I said, they also, they offer a wealth of training services on their website, and so you're looking at a $1,500 savings in addition to what we pay for sexual harassment training right there, and they just, they offer a lot, so I'm interested in potentially looking into that too, so I just wanted to put that. Oh, they also do, would do our retiree billing for us for free, and we'd be able to take, accept, we'll process payments through them, and-
So who does that now?
We do it ourselves.
So, so it seems like we're doing a lot of this outsourcing of some of our services in the office.
Yeah.
Why is that?
Well, people often call us and say, hey, is there any way we can have this electronically sent to us? Well, people often call us and say, hey, is there any way we can have this electronically sent to us versus waiting for a check? And they will do that free of charge.
No, I know, I get it, it just seems over time, I started to outsource my things that would go in the office at one time, and they could...
That would be the only thing.
If we say that's a cost saving, is it really, if we used to do it?
No, that's true, that's just a bonus.
Okay.
Can you send us, so we can get the information?
Thank you. This is usually rough.
Do you want to take this one?
Will?
Yes.
I think you've designated.
Well, thank you, okay. So to be honest with you, I, I'm not really certain what the impetus behind this next line item was, the schedule, agenda, discussion, combining planning and zoning boards, but in reality, we're not discussing combining zoning and planning boards. What we're discussing, I think, is possibly dissolving the planning board.
You are correct.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, sure.
There, there are several advantages, several disadvantages. And so if, if you read any of the discussions that we had, in the emails going back and forth with Jake and myself...
Was it Jake?
Well, no, it, and it's the element ones. What we need to do is really have a good discussion about this, lay the pros and cons, and ask ourselves, is this something we really want to do? Now, recently, we just passed a law which helped alleviate some of the problems, well, not problems, but some of the, um, what is it, overlay, I would say, where you had a project that really didn't necessarily have to come to planning. It was a zoning thing, but the way our law was set up, they had to come to planning first before they went to zoning. And all planning did was give a negative or positive recommendation. Planning really doesn't have any teeth in those applications. It's the zoning board that makes the final decision. Zoning board has control of procedure in those positions too. So, um, in passing the recent law, we helped alleviate a lot of that. So we, we can streamline some of the applications without them having to pay twice for something really they only need to pay once for.
So it really benefits the, the end user coming?
Well, yeah, and I think that was the whole purpose behind passing the local law, or just, you know, changing our local law to benefit the residents, you know?
Would that increase some things coming through this board though?
Well, and that's a good question. So the question is, alright, if we eliminate the planning board, what do we do with site plan approval? Or subdivision approval, okay? So you have one of two choices, from what I understand. Either the board, the village board, can handle all subdivision approval, or, and I correct me, the village board can give authority to the zoning board to have that authority to do subdivision approval as well, with all of their other duties. I'm pretty sure, um, from what I read from Wade Beltramo, who is attorney for NICOM, in civil literature that I had attached to what he gave me, and I passed on or forwarded to you, he gave some footnotes for laws that state we probably could do something like that. So my questions then would be, number one, do you see it as beneficial? Is it something we really need to do, or is it something we're saying, we're just trying to make it more streamlined, maybe for the resident? Or, um, and to be honest with you, part of the problem we've been having is, you know, we've got board members that, number one, we don't have a full planning board, and we already have another member that wants to step down. So finding board members, which I don't know if it's really the case of whether or not there are people out there that don't want to do it, or we just aren't looking for people. So it, it could be one of, you know, two things, right? So are we actively looking to replace board members? You know, people let you know, and I've already talked to some people that said they were interested, and I told them, you know, send an email out to the mayor, because he appoints the, you know, the board member or anything like that. So you've got that. The other thing is, you know, is it a budget issue? Are we saying, geez, you know, why are we paying two boards when we can pay one board? So we'll save that amount of money, kind of, you know? But again, you know, in that, well, no. We, we still, because one of the emails said, oh, we're gonna lose some money, but not necessarily, because you'd have the same type of applications. You either go to planning or go to zoning, so you'd have the same thing. So it, it, that's a moot point, so, um, there would be no, you know, cost saving or whatever, in that sense, or losing money, I should say. So it, it really comes down to, is this something we really need? Is there, you know, a problem with the system we have? Or, you know, is it just because we can't get enough board members, you know?
Right, which probably right now, in my opinion, shouldn't be a reason. I think you have to decide the benefits of having a board and what it does versus the people, because I don't think we, it's been solicited really well to replace people, or people, so I think, I think we shouldn't concentrate on that so much, except the benefits that it provides, and the pros and cons, in my opinion, and that, and, and if it makes sense. I mean, it could be a good workshop discussion too, to just talk through it.
Yeah.
It's not a bad idea to also hear from some of the planning board, um, since they're the professionals in it, what their thoughts are and why, so we could make a sound decision.
Do you really want the responsibility of doing subdivision approval?
Well, that's why, that's what I asked. Well, I, I can't see us doing a ton of that here in the, in the...
No, however, we, we do have some areas that, that may come to fruition over, in the Xerox property, we got Sashance property, forty plus acres still.
We still can review and still push it back to zoning, as we stated, that's the something that you do, like...
Which is what you want to...
But again, all things to talk about. So I think it, yeah, just requires some discussion, and again, some, some data from the people that are actually doing it now.
Yep.
And you're actually going to hear from zoning too, they may have a different opinion.
Well, and Mayor Byers went to the, actually, we've been talking about it for the last year, about potentially doing it, and then it was an issue that we've had some trouble with, with getting people, and to people, there's a couple people that are on it. One wants off, and one's having some health problems, so that was one reason, but also, we wanted to kind of streamline the process for, I know, I understand, we recently helped a little bit with our recent change of the local law, but Daryl, Mayor Byers had went to, I think he, was it planning or zoning? He actually went to the members and was like, what do you think about this? So he kind of asked us to look into it, so we recently had a clerk association and a meeting at JoJo, actually. And we, it's a big thing across most of the villages, they're all talking about doing it, just to help streamline the process, you know, make it a little bit easier for people not to go to two boards if that comes up, or, you know, oftentimes, sometimes a meeting will be canceled, and then they have, people have to wait a month, and their projects are being pushed off. But regardless, it's, it's something to look at.
So our next workshop, why don't you struggle down there and chat a little bit about our next steps?
I, I will just add though, in, in looking into this, the village never adapted a local law to even authorize the planning board to do site plan approval. There's nothing in the village code about site plan approval. So they've been granting site plan approval without any authority. And all of that technically should have gone to the village board. So, whatever you do, whatever you do, you, you need to adapt the local law about site plan approval, whether it's the village board, the planning board, or the zoning board, that really should be done. You know, Jake pointed out, yes, in nineteen sixty-two, there was a resolution, just a simple resolution, that established the planning board and granted them subdivision approval. However, that state law that allowed it to be done by resolution was repealed in nineteen seventy-two, and required a local law. So in nineteen seventy-two, every village in the state should have, and most of them did, but the village of Webster didn't, adopted a local law to set up the planning board. That law was, again, repealed in nineteen ninety-two, which changed some of the parameters of what planning boards, what village boards could delegate to planning boards. But for whatever reason, it fell through the cracks in the village of Webster, and it was never, it was never addressed. So whatever you do, there should be a local law to, A, even create a planning board, and B, tell them what they should be doing, whether it's site plan approval, well, it's site plan approval, really, because special use permits are in the, the zoning ordinance given to the, the planning board, and subdivision approval is given to the planning board. So then the other thing, just so there's no misunderstandings, if you go with a zoning board, it can only have a maximum of five members. So you couldn't expand it to seven people. So the thoughts about, wow, we'll make, um, you know, the current planning board chairman, vice chairman of the zoning board, that can only happen if there's an opening on the zoning board.
We were told that you could have seven, two, five with two alternates.
No, you cannot. Well, you can have alternates, but the alternates don't sit, so, so you can make...
I'm sorry, but they do go to all the meetings, at least at Honeywell Falls, just saying.
Well, they don't vote.
But they don't vote, so what's the point of them going to meetings?
Just to stay informed.
Because often, well, to stay informed, but also because, yeah, but the problem is, is that we're never, we don't have a full, no one's, Joe is constantly being like, oh, we need to have quorum, so please make sure you make it.
I think, I think the issue is more the planning board than the zoning. The zoning board has five members, it's a full board, and at least the meetings that they have had, all five of them show up, so it's, it's more the, it's, it's more the planning board. But I, my point is simply, you know, not to ruffle any current planning board members' feathers, but you can't just shift them to the zoning board. You can make them alternate members, but they'll be non-voting, and so they're, in essence, you know, it's kind of superfluous. But, so I, I'm just saying, that's just a, you know, something to keep in mind, even because there are people involved here. You know, if you decide to eliminate the planning board, you know? Well, in light of this information, please send your Article seventy-eights in care of Don White. But like Will, I take, you know, I take no position one way or the other. If you want to do it, that's fine. And we'll do the appropriate local laws to make it happen, but, but I'm just saying, in any event, we should straighten out the planning board as it currently exists to give, make sure they actually... Because you could get a real smart lawyer that disagreed with a site plan approval of the planning board, and look at the village code and say, they have no authority to do this in the first place.
Especially since you just put it on Facebook again, everywhere else. Alright, done.
But just like, look at the, look at the towns code, they have a whole separate, it's not even in the zoning ordinance, or the zoning local law, they have a whole separate section on site plan approval, which lays it all out, what they have, you know, it's, it's very comprehensive. The village should have something like that.
So we'll, we'll discuss more on this in the next workshop. So Don, you're up again for your attorney. Do you have anything else for us tonight, sir?
No, probably the village clerk would say I talk too much.
I would never say that.
Think next meeting, we're gonna move you guys next to each other.
That would be good.
Alright, code enforcement. Will?
Sure, well, I haven't been here in a while.
That's true.
One, because I had pneumonia, and two, because I had other responsibilities I had to take care of, so thankfully.
We do miss you.
Well, thanks, when you're not here.
Speak for yourself.
Why are you always nice to him?
You know, ever since I achieved low self-esteem, life has been so much easier. So looking at the report, because if I would put everything on this, it'd be like four or five pages, so I just listed that we had a total of twenty building permits. But this is the annual report, so you'll see on page ten, there's a graph there, I usually use the same graph every year. When I find something I like, I just use it. But you'll notice the highlighted sections, we had a pretty good year in permits. I mean, obviously, by no means are we heavy on permits compared to some municipalities, but last year, we did a hundred and sixteen permits, this year, we did a hundred and sixteen permits, so we had a large increase. And looking at the types of permits that increased, both commercial and residential, so, you know, over on East Main Street, there's been a lot of work done, there's still a lot of work going done. We're starting to see businesses come into the village again, some really good businesses, and all kinds of, of businesses is what I like. So we've got some art, you know, now in the...
Here's some really good stuff.
The quilt shop, which is really nice, Pickle Paintbrush, but I think they're moving down to the...
They're moving down the line, yeah.
Yeah, which they have to, if, if you're watching, call me, because I need to talk to you personally. And, you know, of course, JoJo's.
Who wants to give them your cell phone number?
No, thanks. But what I'm also finding in residential is, and this will come out in the report for the local newspaper, is I'm starting to see a lot of the people, rather than moving into senior living communities or adult care facilities, they're having first-floor additions put on that make it accessible, so basically, it's usually just a bedroom and a bathroom. And when I, when I talk to them about it, you know, number one, you know, they'd rather spend the money on their own home and their investment, but number two, they want to stay because they love the village so much, which is a really nice thing to hear. I think we have a great community, and so I plan on sticking around for a little while anyway. And so other than that, the information's there. If you have any questions, let me know what you, any thoughts that you might have?
Thanks, Will.
I mean, just on the permits and the violations, you got all hung up, and it was huge. What, I think I could assist though.
What's that? Which, which huge?
In your grand...
Oh, all other, oh, yeah, what that is, is, okay, so you have, you know, a single family.
Yeah.
Right, and you have multiple family, you have commercial, all other would be decks, pools, fences, roofs.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan, well.
Alright, thank you, sir. Department of Public Works and Sewer, Jake?
Yes, sir. Um, the E W H highlights, we're beginning to work on a ready grant to meet, uh, three Friday, actually, not meeting tomorrow, um, we're gonna be in on the thirty-first. For the ready grant, if you recall, that's decommissioning wells down at the Sanbar, it's a grant that's a resiliency and economic development initiative, um, now along the, along the lake shore in the Sanbar area, so working with the town on that. Working with the engineers, getting the engineers, you know, they're gonna do combined engineering reports where they can for some of the projects, depending on which agency. Our project is being run by E F C, um, or, you know, E F C has authority over the project, some, some of them are the dormitory authority. So ours is gonna be the E F C wanna have its own engineering report, and, um, secret in, in that. And the other three projects down there are gonna be combined into one report, but they're getting that worked out in the cost estimates. Also have engineering starting, they're going to be collecting some data for the Kidderburton Park Circle. It's been a while since we talked about that, but that's, if you recall, it's the Wild West down there, we're looking to make improvements now that the village has the circle. So I'm trying to change that, so we can, you know, provide a, an improvement to that area and see what the engineers, we, we thought about making a, internally directing the traffic around and actually making a raised median, and then working with the homeowners association that's down there. If we provide a, you know, a canvas farm, and they can put some landscaping or things in there, dress it up how they, how they want, and do some sort of agreement with them, everybody can benefit from it down there, so. And we're working with Will on a community development block grant, uh, we're, another two weeks or three weeks. Gotta have the application in for next year. Gotta have the application in for next year. We'll have some more information on that soon. I think it's in Will's report, it's small, but the, last year, we had over 87,000. The way it works, the timing is not wonderful. We go to a meeting, steering committee meeting in January and February. We have to have applications. And usually, April, May, they let us know that there's, the county community and development manages for mostly, mostly communities in Monroe County. I think it's the Henry, the City, and Threes. And I think around it, White's open as well. They do their own community development block grant, but we work through a coalition like with the county. So they let us know in late spring, early summer that they're gonna send it and submit it and intend to include our project. And then the county ledge votes on it in like September. Well, we don't obviously want to start too many of those projects in September as we rush in the spring to try to get it done within this budget year and then get the, gotta keep the projects moving along, so. But it's a really great program. We used to use it for water lines. Now we've been, we've switched around and are using it for sidewalks. But I think the 87 grand was the highest that we've ever received, so.
It's calm.
I think it's, because Will does everything perfect for them, and they really like it.
Well, dear, 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 dear.
I'm trying to.
Wow, everybody likes Will.
And just a reminder, everybody, obviously, winters started early. We're using as much salt as we have to use, so expect a budget modification towards the end of the season. But we do follow, in the village, a sensible salty model, they call it, where we salt hills and intersections. Sometimes there's a modification of that. We'll do major intersections versus the ones in the interior, depending on what time of the day it is, what kind of road conditions there are. Try to always make sure the hills and parking lots and things are done, certainly. But also record a sensible driving. You notice there's stretches. We don't salt, all that salt ends up in the lake. You know, through our storm system, it's not treated. So we don't salt big stretches of straight road that slowly gets tracked down there. It gets, but we have 30 mile an hour speed limits, too, at the most. And obviously, if they're snow covered, 25 or 20 is probably a good speed to go. So to remind people to go, you know, in decent speed and drive to the conditions that they are. We purposely don't salt the roads that are, you know, black roads because we have lower speed limits and we can, and just a little common sense, people can accommodate a little bit of smell on them when we don't have to lay salt and they end up in the creeks and streams and the lakes, so. But that's, I think that's all I have for that. And Seward, I think we discussed it last time. I know we didn't, but the grant that we received for that, we're continuing to try to talk to the town, too, to get some more information on, on the discussions that we're having there, so.
Thank you.
You know, one thing, I guess I do want to say, there's Seward, there's been a lot of discussion, it's not related to Seward at all. Our Seward bickers have seen it even on Facebook, a chemical order, odor things, they're out. It's not our plan. It's not, the town put out a thing today, it wasn't their lead file. Seems they're trying to, tends to trade it north end and west of 250, seems like in the low areas. So they're trying to wrap their head around is exactly what it is. And the town's, you know, put an update on it. They're working with the DEC to try to figure out what it is. But important, if you notice it, when, you know, during the day, especially, you know, depending on where you live, you know, call up an official, somebody will come out and take a peek and try to, try to track it down and see what it is. But there was reports even in Penfield, and I think over in Rantley as well. So they're trying to wrap their head around. Could be just, you know, the weather conditions or some sort of atmospheric condition, something's kind of flipping over, but that's not our plan. We've checked it and checked it, so.
And checked it.
And checked it. Thank you.
Sure. Can I add one more thing? Because Jake reminded me with the CEBG there. And the, just doing a quick math, I've been doing this for about 15 years. We've received just under a million dollars in grant money from them.
It is fantastic.
So, did you get a commission? No, I don't get a commission. I really need to thank the Community Development Block for it. It's a wonderful job they do and for helping us be a better village.
So our next meeting is the village board workshop is February 4th. Village board meeting, February 13th. Village board meeting, February 27th is the schedule for the next three meetings. Does anyone have anything else this evening? Don, anything for other? And then I will ask for a motion to.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
He's just heading travel in, in the snowstorm.